All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Winnetka Village Council Regular Meeting for March 3rd, 2020. I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask that everybody turn off or mute your cellphones or other electronic devices. And I've asked trustee Swark to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is quorum. Rob, would you like to check quorum, please?
Certainly. Next week, March 10th, will be a special meeting where we have scheduled the stormwater action items, the two intergovernmental agreements, and the zoning relief. So that would be for next Tuesday. And then the next regular meeting is scheduled for March 19th due to the Illinois primary. Now, John, you're out.
Correct.
Does anybody else want for that meeting? Okay. And then April 7th, regular meeting?
You.
And, okay, Bob is out. Thank you.
Sounds good. Item number four, public comment. This is the time of the evening where anyone from the audience who wishes to can step up to the microphone and share your thoughts with village council. Do we have anybody who wishes to share their thoughts tonight? I gotta ask. Seeing none, I will close the public comment and move on to item five, which is a public hearing regarding Skokie Playfield zoning relief in conjunction with village stormwater improvements. This public hearing to be continued to March 10th, 2020. May I have a motion to continue the public hearing regarding the Skokie Playfield zoning relief to the March 10th council meeting?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Trustee Lambfier?
Yes.
Trustee Swark?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Collet Archie?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, reports. Penny, we'll start down with you. Any report?
No.
Bob?
No.
That's two. John?
No report.
Andy?
No report.
And look who snuck in, Jack.
I was here the whole time. I didn't say Andy. Briefly, on the Landmark Preservation Commission, we referred a house to have a study done on its historical nature. It was a very attractive house on Linden, sort of iconic. It looks sort of like the Home Alone house. The owner was not, didn't know anything about the house or hadn't considered anything related to its, what the impact of taking down the house on the neighborhood might be. And so, given that there was an architect of note who had built it and had only one house remaining in the village, we referred it off for an impact study. So, we're making our efforts to try to save the house if we can.
Mm-hmm. Great. Was there any indicator that it was going to a developer?
No. The individual who bought it was, had grown up on the North Shore, had moved to Hinsdale, and we thought, ah, they got it in their blood for teardowns in Hinsdale. Rents here in the village with his family and had bought the house in 2018. In June, allowed the people who lived there to move out in September, and it's been sitting. And when we questioned him, he said, well, what's the inside of the house look like? I don't know. I'd never seen it.
Wow.
You know, we weren't, and said he had not looked anyplace else. That was, he, it was basically, I want the lot, I want to build a house, but it's a beautiful house in good shape, so we're hoping that he'll reconsider and maybe allow somebody who might preserve the house to buy it, and he can have another lot. We're not sure, but we'll see what the, if, we'll see if the, the study helps change his mind. So. I want to say the 700 block. I'm trying to think. It was, it's Linden, and there's three houses across the street that have been torn down in the past 20 years, one next to him. And it's, I think, Linden right by sunset, I'm thinking. It's a red brick Georgian, beautiful house, just beautiful. It's not, like, a lot of the houses that we see aren't in particularly great shape, either because the owners have let it run down, or the purchase, the developer has let it run down, and then they stand and say, oh, we can't save the house. So the commission has indicated that it would like to start asking people what steps they've actually taken to preserve the house and what the condition is of the house that's allowed it to get so run down.
Mm-hmm.
To push back a little bit and have the people who attend actually make some statements. And the other thing that we're hoping to do is require that the owner be present at the hearing. Right now, that was something which I'll speak to Peter about, is trying to find the basis for running the hearing. How do you determine who is supposed to show up at the hearing and make the presentation? Because a lot of times, we'll get developers or the architect, but not an owner or not a purchaser. And we think that it's important, for the purpose of what we're trying to do, to have the owner present, so they can answer questions about, you know, so we can, trying to change the developers' mind never seems to work as well as maybe having an owner present, so.
Great. Well, thank you, Jack. Village attorney?
No reports, sir.
Village manager?
No report.
Village president? I have notes this time, because last time I forgot. So I want to kind of update everybody on what I've been up to over the last few weeks. Okay, on February 19th, I attended the Streetscape Open House, which was a forum that was set up for the merchants of the West Elm Business District to come out and talk with staff and myself about the upcoming project. We had really good attendance. It was, it was a two-hour deal, so people kind of came and went. And we actually ended up revising our phasing schedule based on some preferences shown by the merchants. So it was really helpful, and we had a really good engaged discussion, and I think it helps to enlighten everybody on, on, you know, what's coming up, down the pipe. The one, two things that they did mention, one was that there was a concern that the public still wasn't really completely aware of the 41 new pri, uh, public parking spaces for shopping that we created over in the, the north parking lot of the post office there. So they asked us to provide some banners that really help people understand that they can park in there during the day to do their shopping. And, you know, it'll also work with the merchants as far as, you know, store open and things of that nature, maybe allowing a little bit more with sandwich boards and the like, so that people can, you know, make, make the public aware that they're open and, and welcoming new business. On the 20th, Rob, Steve, and I presented the Crow Island Woods Stormwater Component to the Winnetka Park District. It was well received. We had some good conversations on that with, with folks who attended the meeting. And at that meeting, the Park District passed, ratified the intergovernmental agreement for the playfield, and that's something we'll be seeing next week. On the 21st, I met with staff, again on Streetscape, to discuss, something that was brought up at council, is to discuss messaging and communications, and really started to build a strategy, not only for communicating to the merchants, but also to work, you know, tried a lot of different ideas for communicating with the public, and again reinforcing the fact that, you know, even though there's construction going on, there's business as usual. So, and it also included understanding how, you know, helping the merchants understand how they can communicate with the village in an effective manner, so they can get action when things are troubling them. On the 27th of February, attended the Winnetka Park District meeting again. I feel like I belong over there now. They passed Crow Island, the Crow Islands Wood, Woods intergovernmental agreement, so we'll have both of those for our consideration next week. Additionally, and I thought this was really interesting, I'm glad I attended, one of the staff members provided a really comprehensive report on the condition of the beaches and the erosion that's been going on. And if you haven't seen, it is ungodly. I mean, the amount of damage and, you know, the amazing thing is, is they talked about how many programs, summer programs that they would be reducing, and swimming beaches that would be closed, and, and, you know, access restriction to the closed areas, and just the public safety factors. But it was a good 30-minute presentation with a lot of slides. Folks, if you, if you haven't seen what our lakefront looks like lately, it is just, it's, it's terrifying. It's terrifying. And the amount of money it's going to cost, you know, never mind the, you know, the lakefront plan that they came up with, just getting back to ground zero is going to take a tremendous amount of work. It really was.
Chris, what was their expectation for the rise? Because my understanding, at least from the Michigan end of things, is that they're expecting, the Army Corps was expecting a foot rise over the next year. Is that what they're banking on?
He was saying between 12 to 18 inches additional rise.
Right, right.
And they had some graphs that showed that, and, of course, a lot depends on weather. But, boy, I'll tell you, if you, if you have a chance to, you know, stroll down there and just take a look, it is really devastating to see what's happened to our, our lakefront there.
Is there anything that the state of Illinois is doing or that we need to follow up on in terms of emergency?
Yeah, they, you know, Penny, they were talking about a lot, well, you know, the state, and, and Rob, maybe you can weigh in on this, but the state and, you know, federal funds are going to be made available.
Right.
And they'll be pursuing those. We actually will be pursuing some too for our freshwater intake and some of our, our stormwater outlets as well. Go ahead, Rob.
Sure. So, emergency was, or disaster was declared.
Right.
That storm with the waves, wave action. It's my understanding the Park District is submitting close to $1 million in reimbursable expenses. That includes the racks they had for their boats and the various walks, and probably the structural damage that they had in other areas of their beaches. We sustained just minor damage on our pier, under $50,000, but we still are going to submit.
Right.
So, but that was the extent of what they're looking for, and, and in terms of the reimbursement schedule, we just don't know yet.
And is there anything that we need to be doing as a municipality for our residents who are lake shore homeowners?
Not to my knowledge at this point that we need to be doing specifically. I think the, the idea at this point is to understand, you know, Army Corps projections,
Right.
and then just keep passing on the information. You know, many, we're very fortunate that there are bluffs, right? So there aren't a lot of structures at, at lake shore level. But it's something that we're going to have to watch very carefully.
Okay, okay. I just, I, I.
Especially in terms of security and working with the Park District and making sure that hazards are clearly marked.
Right. So relative to our own, our own operations, then, and then again, if there's any responsibility that we have relative to our residents that we need to be doing. Thanks.
There's no risk to the, the water plant, or the power plant from the higher water?
Not at this time.
So, but it was, it was fascinating, to say the least, and eye-opening, and I think, you know, as elected officials, we all owe it to ourselves to be educated on that, because it is definitely something, an important issue in the village.
I would add that the lake shore managers were on a conference call this week, and will be sending a collective letter to FEMA to help them understand the challenges that we're, that we're facing. I'll just make sure that that gets shared with council, so you can see the concerns that we're putting forward overall.
That's right.
In terms of the water plant, we're in pretty good shape, really are. Some of, some of the concerns about backflow through the pump house, we think we've got that fairly well contained, but that's, our biggest risk is during a storm, not so much during normal wave action, even when it's high.
Yeah. Good stuff. All right. Furthermore, I continue to try to organize our normal quarterly meeting. Greg Robitaille started a quarterly meeting of the board presidents. Greg was a, was the president of the Nutria High School Board. So we've been a little distracted with stormwater and a couple of other things, but I decided to get that back on track. So I've reached out to Nutria, District 36, the Park District, and the Winnetka Northfield Library to resume our quarterly meetings to discuss and share information on what our agendas are looking like. And finally, on Sunday evening, there was a conference call that included Mayor Lightfoot and 130 mayors from around the state. And we were briefed on, on the city of Chicago's efforts and planning and communication strategy regarding coronavirus, and some of the actions we, as a united group, can begin to take to make sure that we have good information sharing, good resource sharing, and an ability to petition as, as a larger region for federal assistance and federal funds to combat this and, and help deal with it as it is. And that was a very eye-opening conversation. I, I will say, the good news is, is from at least what, what we were hearing on the call, the city really has their act together relative to the airports. They really seem to understand how to, how to deal with that the best they can. And they, you know, my sense was, is they're ahead of the curve of a lot of other airports and, you know, across the country in the way that they're approaching this and dealing with it, and some of the protocol that they've already got in place for dealing with international travelers and things of that nature. So, obviously more to come on that, but it was really, it, it, it made me feel, feel really good to see that there would, on a Sunday evening, 7 o'clock, that 130 mayors were willing to get on the phone and participate in an hour-long communication on this. So, it's important stuff. It's timely, a little bit overwhelming when you start to hear the information, but at the same time, you know, being part of that information pipeline, I think, is important for every village to, to be involved with. So.
Do we have a, I mean, of course we do, a local plan that's been updated in terms of what happens if coronavirus comes into Winnetka? Do we respond on a municipality level, or do they respond on a county level, or?
So we, we have what's called an all hazards plan. There's also virus and pandemic aspects of the all hazards plan. Staff has been meeting on this since last week. We spent a lot of time at staff meeting this morning. So right now, we're making sure that consistent information is being distributed, not only to our employees, but to residents. So the, in the E-Winnetka blast last week, it was the same information that you're seeing coming from City of Chicago or, or CDC. It's, obviously, we have to monitor it very closely, but we're also looking at how we can prepare as staff to best, to respond to calls that will most likely come. How do we protect our employees, particularly first responders, police and firefighters, making sure that they're protected, the equipment is protected? What can we do here every day in terms of keeping our facilities clean? You know, wiping down, I know it sounds kind of basic, but wiping down all the public counters a couple of times a day, disinfecting them, making sure that people are using good hygiene. So those are the things that we're doing right now based upon the information that we've been presented.
Bottom line, wash your hands.
Yeah, but.
With soap and water.
Right. But you're gonna, we're gonna have to look at, you know, the, the outbreaks that, that may occur, and make sure that we're looking at alternative staffing plans. Can people work remotely if that's the case? What are the, just the critical functions we need to keep going if there's really a wide outbreak? We're hoping that that doesn't happen, of course, but we're looking into all those aspects.
And one, one bit of news, just, just kind of adding on to what Rob said there, is that it appears that there's going to be significant federal funds available to reimburse all municipalities for the time and resources that are invested in, in dealing with this. So, you know, Rob is already on top of that with, with, with record-keeping, because even these, you know, staff meetings that are, that are assembled, all that staff time is actually billable back to the feds at some point in time. So we're going to make sure that we're doing everything we can to, to keep ahead of that, and if there's some money out there to grab, you know, we'll, we'll definitely be in a position to pursue it. So, all right. We'll move on to item seven, approval of the agenda. Does any trustee wish to move an item on the consent agenda for a separate vote? Hearing none, may I have a motion to approve the final form of the agenda?
So moved. Second.
Voice vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Item eight is the consent agenda. I will ask the village clerk to read the items on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Approval of the village council meeting minutes for February 18th, 2020, regular meeting. Approval of the warrant list dated February 14th through the 27th, 2020, in the amount of $1,038,999.93. And resolution number R-26, 2020, Parkway Tree Planting Contract Extensions for Adoption.
Thanks, Rob. All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda by omnibus vote?
So moved. Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Collet Archie?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Swark?
Yes.
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Lambfier?
Motion carries. Item nine, ordinances and resolutions, 9A, resolution number R-23, 2020, which is the 2020 Street Rehabilitation and Public Improvement Project. This is up for adoption. Village staff plans the annual street rehabilitation program in conjunction with the water main replacement schedule. This practice reduces long-term construction expenditures for the village. The next three resolutions all pertain to the 2020 Street Rehab Program. Here to review the related item is Assistant Public Works Director Jim Burnow.
Thank you, President Rents. Good evening. As part of the village's annual maintenance program, roadways are prioritized using a term that you've heard, heard me say before, which is IMS. That's the Infrastructure Management System. It's a non-destructive roadway system that helps us prioritize our roadways. In addition to that, as President Rents noted, we also work collaboratively with the water and electric department to prioritize their high priority water mains with our roadway resurfacing, resurfacing program to maximize our dollars and make sure that we're not going to the same spot twice. This year's program includes some of the similar activities that we've done before, new curbing, some sidewalk replacement, grinder resurfacing of the roadways, manhole structure rehabilitation, and then also the installation of new water mains. All of the roads on this program, the street rehabilitation program, includes water main replacement and water service replacement. This year's program also has an alternative bid to it, and that's for the replacement of the public parking lot at, near the corner of Birch and Spruce. The plan is to replace that and make it a full concrete parking lot, as we've done with some of the similar ones that you've seen, Elm Street Train Station, for example. And included with that, we'll, we'll be hoping to get that done as quickly as possible, but try to keep it away from the Streetscape, so we'll sequence that out through the year. On February 13th, the village opened bids. We received three bids for this contract. The apparent low bidder was from A-Lamp Concrete Contract out of Schaumburg, or Concrete, excuse me, out of Schaumburg, Illinois, with a low bid price of $3,303,521.24. As you, as you're familiar, A-Lamp has done work for the village in the past. They were, they did our street rehabilitation program last year, and also the street rehab program on Spruce and Chestnut. In your packets, there's a breakdown of the, of the dollars, the budget amounts, and, and the bid totals on there. One of the items that you'll note on there was the water main work. When we originally estimated that, we estimated that to be a little bit less than where the bid numbers came in, about $47,320 over the budgeted amount that Brian Keyes had actually listed out there for the water main replacement out of the 2020 Water Fund. After talking through this, rather than delay the project, Brian Keyes is recommending that staff be allowed to utilize, excuse me, utilize funds and draw down from the water fund capital balance by the excess amount. As you may recall, last year, we received, in the fall of last year, we received some unfavorable bid numbers for a couple of the streets we were trying to do through an IPA revolving loan fund. Those water mains were placed on this project, so increased that amount there just a little bit. Staff believes that A-Lamp will continue to do a good job for us in our street rehab program. We're hoping to get started here in the early spring and be completed here with all the projects by September of this year. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Jim?
Just a couple here, Jim.
Sure.
And maybe it's just municipal finance, accounting, and so on, just running through all these numbers and so on. So the, the budgeted bid was, on the whole thing, was $3,391.
Mm-hmm.
Coming in at $3,303.
Right.
What, the engineer's estimate of costs? Tell me how that works. When does that, when is that estimate made? Is that made before the budget, after the budget? What?
It's made after the budget, and what it's done is it draws, from our experience of similar projects and other communities, we share what our bid numbers are. So we look at how other public information for similar projects, and then we take the average of those bid numbers. So the numbers that you see in the engineer's estimates are based on what the average numbers received for projects are. So we don't go high, we don't go low, we try to stay right in the middle.
How do we look at that? I mean, what, what, what value is that information? Obviously, it's lower than, you know, several hundred thousand dollars lower than the budget.
Sure. Right.
Amount. It's lower than the actual bid amounts. So what's, what's the value of that engineer's estimate to us?
So what, what it provides to us is it provides us a good overview of what we can expect from the market. The things that we don't know at the end of the season, for example, would be, for example, the coronavirus drove the price of oil down. But because the production is down, the price for, for asphalt materials went up. So our analysis helps us, put us in a, in a close spot where we're never, we're never super low, we're never coming back saying we have to cut projects out of the budget. It keeps it as consistent as we can.
Okay. So the engineer, in this case, the estimate's 100,000 less than the ultimate accepted bid.
Correct.
That's not a, that's not a concern to us, or it's within the plus or minus? I mean, if that engineer bid came in at two and a half million.
Right.
Would that change?
Yes. Then we would go back and look at our numbers and.
Okay.
Try to understand why we, why we estimated the work to be so high. Every year, we try to work within the parameter of about 1.5 million is what we allocate for street rehab. This year was at 1.9 because we pulled those water main projects over that we received unfavorable bids on. That engineer's estimate helped us determine that by pulling those over, we could save over $350,000, which is what we did here. Because if you recall, it was about 698 or something like that.
Yeah.
It was really high. So we knew that by waiting and pulling it over, we could reduce the cost.
Good move. Yeah. So, and then on the, on the, on the parking lot, that's, that's an alternate alt-one to the base project.
Right.
But is that parking lot all allocated? I see you're taking, there's a portion of it coming out of the street rehab for whatever that, it's, it's portion of the work.
Right.
Is that all, did that alt-one come in as budgeted within the different?
It did.
Budget numbers and so on?
Yeah, it did.
Line items?
Yeah, it did. And we've got really good numbers on that. A-Lamp has done most of the projects, the Community House, the Elm Street one, that we kind of know what those dollars are going to run us for reinforced concrete. As you recall, and it'll be one of the other agenda items, this was originally included as part of a, a separate funding source, but we were asked to utilize MFT funds to cover a portion of the street rehab, which I'll talk about. That's the MFT one next.
Yep.
So we, we were able to utilize those dollars, keep it within the 1.9 million that we had budgeted out of general funds, and keep it below what we anticipated. The parking lot came in about, I want to say 15,000 less than what we had originally anticipated, so we were right on track where we thought.
Okay. And then lastly, in using the reserves in the water fund, I guess?
Yes.
What's the, and maybe there's a Tim question. You know, what's the general policy on that? I don't remember going into reserves in the past on too many issues, but it makes, I'm not questioning whether it makes sense in this case, I'm just wondering, when are we comfortable sort of going into reserves for a project that?
Sure. I'll, I'll do the first crack, and then maybe Tim will want to jump up. We're comfortable, in this case, as long as we're maintaining our minimum fund balance, and right now, we're tracking ahead of the minimum fund balance. So that's, that's, if we're under the minimum fund balance, we might, you know, say, hey, is this something we really want to do? Or we could consider a transfer to cover it if we needed to. Tim, was there anything you wanted to add?
Also, it kind of, just on a case-by-case basis, so last year, if we came in under budget and our fund balances were favorable, then we'd feel a little bit more comfortable by dipping into fund balance the next year, much by pushing off the water main projects last year and putting them in this year. You know, we accumulate a little bit extra fund balance than we anticipated during.
Okay.
Last budget cycle, so we know we have some funds, you know, within reason. Obviously, this is a pretty reasonable dip within.
But it's, it's a fairly, not rare, but it doesn't happen too often, from what I can remember.
It, it, it happens infrequently.
Infrequently. Yeah. Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Quick question. When the projects go out for bid, there's a budget associated with that RFP, right?
There's, there's an engineer's estimate.
Right.
That we use, right.
And that's, because, you know, you look at the pavement patching, eighteen thousand, well, coincidentally, it's eighteen thousand.
Right.
So.
Well, no, no, so, so what, how that works, um, is we allocate different funding sources to cover different work activities, but all part of the same project. So we'll have roadway patching that will be in excess of eighteen thousand dollars, but that dollar amount was what we anticipate. Um, so we keep lists throughout the course of the year, and for example, if, uh, Brian Keyes has water main projects, we have a running list. We use that number to try to, based on historical, what do we think it's going to be? Um, so those are all funding sources that go into that project. So in this specific case, all those funding sources that are listed on here, as part of your executive summary, um, are those funding sources, for example, roadway striping. We do additional roadway striping near schools and, and throughout. It's all included as part of that one-sum project, so it's a culmination of everything.
Thanks.
Anybody else?
Um, yeah, just a quick question about the, um, about the parking lot. Um, and just wondering about sort of what, what the success, um, has been with the, um, green pavement, or whatever the term for it is, over at the Community House lot, and, you know, I know it's expensive, um, to put it and to maintain, you know, was it, would it be worthwhile doing on the Elm Street lot, or is that too, really too small to make a difference?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, excuse me, the Birch Street lot, right?
Uh, we are actually encompassing it. All public parking lots that we have been designing now encompass some form of green infrastructure.
Right.
So the Elm Street Train Station parking lot that we had done last year, and had it along the parking stalls, the, uh, the Birch and Spruce parking lot will also encompass that, too.
Okay.
We, we look to harvest it, filter out some of those sediments and things like that. It's worked out great. Um, we do general maintenance on the Lincoln parking lot as well as Elm, and we are, uh, taking a lot of collected, harvested, um, uh, spoilage finds that, that get in and percolate through.
Right.
Uh, no flooding issues, no ice issues, so it's, it's worked out very well for.
Terrific, that's good to hear. Good, thank you.
Okay, public comment. Would anybody from the audience like to, uh, comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Any final questions or comments for Jim? Okay, move ahead here. Uh, may I have a motion to adopt resolution number R twenty-three, two thousand and twenty?
So moved?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Trustee Dearborn?
Yes.
Trustee Kreip?
Yes.
Trustee Coladarchi?
Yes.
Trustee Lambfier?
Yep.
Trustee Swirt?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next item, item B, resolution number R twenty-four, two thousand and twenty, Chicago, uh, good, Chicagoland Paving Contract for MFT Street Resurfacing. This is for adoption, and Jim will give us a review on this as well.
Yes, um, I kind of touched base on this a little bit before. Um, at, at the direction of the village council, we were asked to try to utilize some of the motive fuel tax dollars that the village collects on an annual basis to help pay for some of our, our infrastructure instead of holding it in reserves for some of the larger ones. So as part of that, staff created, um, a, a separate roadway resurfacing program, we're calling it the MFT Resurfacing Program. Uh, we originally had a budget of about three hundred and twenty-five thousand is where we thought that was going to fall. Um, this program is slightly different, where you have to meet state requirements, there are state submittal and bidding processes that we must adhere to since we're utilizing that fund. Um, as part of that, we, we, we looked at the same, we evaluated the roadways the same way we did for the street rehabilitation program. We just pulled those roadways out that were primarily minor concrete repairs, but mostly grinding and resurfacing, something very simplistic, something we could get through and utilize the funds for. If we didn't utilize the MFT funds, we would have included those streets as part of our street rehab program, the, the single contract. So we just pulled those out separately. Um, with that, uh, there's no water main work on any of them, again, just grinding and resurfacing. Uh, on February sixth, the village received six bids. Again, this was through the IDOT letting, uh, with the apparent low bid coming from Chicagoland Paving for an amount of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, I'll be talking, uh, next, the next agenda item, that exceeds the resolution we passed at the end of last year, uh, authorizing the spending of, uh, MFT funds. We'll, we'll talk about that a little bit. Uh, Chicagoland Paving has worked for us in the past. Last time they did was in two thousand and eight. Um, they, there was some general issues, there were some project management issues that took place, uh, so much so that, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, when they were the apparent low bidder, the village decided to award it to a different contractor. Um, with that being said, it's been more than eleven years since, since they've done work for us. Uh, they remain IDOT qualified, uh, they continue to work regularly on the North Shore area. Staff believes that, um, the management issue that was encountered before, that person is no longer with them. Uh, so we think that's okay, that they'll meet the village's obligation and meet IDOT's requirements, uh, for that. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about that project.
Yeah, I, I wanted to chime in here, Jim.
Sure.
Um, you knew I would. Chicagoland Paving left behind some of the worst concrete and asphalt work I have ever seen before in two thousand and eight. Besides that, they were just playing pigs as far as their execution of contracts and the way they treated people's private property. Uh, they were just, they were completely out of control, and I know you had mentioned that there were management issues. Uh, there's a reason why they haven't worked for us all this time, because, uh, uh, some of their bad work still sits there for folks who live over on Spruce Street to admire every night when they're out walking their dog, so, uh, it was horrible. It was, I mean, they just, they did, I, I, I think they used substandard materials. Uh, you know, the way that they left sites supposedly finished was, was unconscionable and unacceptable. You know, I, and there's a big difference between being, uh, IDOT certified and Winnetka certified. I mean, when you're out in a, uh, state highway, you can get away with a lot of stuff because you're not twenty-five feet from somebody's front lawn, or their patio for that matter. So, you know, I, I, I see the next bid is twelve thousand dollars more, and that's ALAMP, who we've already given a lot of work to this year. Uh, but I think it's going to be really important for you and your staff to be all over these people when they begin their work, if, if we, if, if council elects to give them the project, because, uh, if, if their past performance is any indicator of what we're expecting to see, uh, I'd be really hard-pressed to award them another contract. That being said, uh, you know, we're over budget a little bit, or, or over allocation a little bit on this anyway.
Right.
Uh, makes it a little bit harder to push to go to maybe the third bidder. Uh, but I just want to make sure that you guys are on, on, on board with being aggressively, uh, in your oversight to make sure that these guys behave themselves. And who knows, maybe they'll, maybe they will be a good contractor, but, uh, but I still have my reservations.
Understood. We'll make sure that we, that we hold them accountable.
And, and how long typically, let's say we, we grind and resurface these streets, how, how long is that good for?
Um, it, it depends on the subgrade of some of the roads, what, what you don't see underneath the asphalt on it. Typically, uh, for a, a surface grind, what we call a surface grind, which is just milling two inches off and putting it back, you can get anywhere from ten to fifteen years. Um, now, if you recall, we're, we're using that product, the, um, uh, from CAM, Corrective Asphalt Materials, that pavement rejuvenator
Mm-hmm.
That we put on, and we've been actually having really good success with it, it holds the asphalt together longer, so at a minimum, you should get fifteen years before you're back.
Which brings up my next point. Uh, I'm looking at the streets that we're proposing to do here. Cherry Street, from Hibbert to Glendale, Glendale Avenue, uh, Locust, that doesn't matter, uh, Oak Street, from Hibbert to Glendale. Uh, you know, those three are going to be completely annihilated when the Stormwater project comes along.
Yeah.
Which realistically probably won't be for four to five years if, if we decide to go in that direction. I mean, so how do we reconcile spending money repaving streets that we know we're going to be tearing up soon?
Yeah, we've, um, we kind of wrestled with this a little bit. Um, they are heavily traversed roadways, especially near the school areas. Um, we've tried to postpone them off as long, really as long as we could. We, we receive multiple concerns and complaints from residents in the area to do patchwork, and, and, and we're trying to hold it together. Um, in the long term, with the exact start date for the Stormwater unknown at this time, uh, trying to renovate and fix those areas where, where most of the parents come and by the schools, we've tried to hold it off. We, we think it makes sense that, to kind of do this now, um, to at least buy us some time to address some of those safety issues and
Mm-hmm.
And improve how the roadway appearance looks and, and drives.
Great, okay, thanks. Any other, any, any que, any other guys?
Yeah, I remember having a discussion about those roads, and I think they're probably slated to have been like the base replaced also, but it's only going to do the surface as the temporary fix.
Correct.
Even though it could be ten or fifteen years.
Correct.
But they should have been slated for base also, I believe, right?
They were, based on our, our, they're actually ranked one of the highest roads to be replaced as part of our IMS information that we get.
Right.
Uh, well, again, we tried to keep pushing it off a little bit, but we're getting to that point where.
So when Stormwater does come through, the base will be repaired properly and totally renovated.
Totally rebuilt.
So it, it is a tough decision. People are going to think, hey, we just did that, not ripping it apart, but I guess the thought did go in. And then, do you have the, does the village have the ability to go back to ALAMP and negotiate, just considering they're also getting the other contract? They get down to a lower number, is that legal? I'm not sure.
Uh, we've, all these bids were competitively bid. Um, so, for the MFT, no, uh, that's separate, that's a state one. For the street rehab, they're the lowest apparent bidder, so I'm not sure how much flexibility we could go back. Uh, that might be a better directed counsel, maybe to counsel.
You mean negotiate on this contract?
Yeah, you know, say, look, look, let me give you both, can you come down to the three-thirty with the pair that you pointed out for Chicagoland Paving?
Well, because the other one's MFT, there's a bidding process, we, we couldn't do that. If you wanted, if you were talking about negotiating the, the street rehab one, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
But it's also the lowest qualified bidder, correct?
That's correct.
So we do have the ability, but it would be the twelve thousand more.
At, at minimum, yeah.
Right, right, in a minimum, yeah.
You know, I, I kind of like the idea, Chris, you sort of mentioned it, of having someone other than ALAMP.
Mm-hmm.
I hear an ALAMP all over the town now.
Right.
And, you know, I mean, maybe these people will turn out to be better than, than expected, you know, who knows? And then you have a second firm, and, and Jimmy's saying in your note that they've done work on the North Shore, I assume that's
They do.
Been checked on, and so maybe they had a bad year in 'oh-eight, who knows?
It was real bad.
Real bad year. It was a bad year, 'oh-eight.
Yeah, for many reasons.
Question on the MFT, and this was a budget discussion, as I recall clearly. Um, so remind me, three hundred and twenty-five thou, what, what's our total MFT budget for projects this year?
Uh, well, between the Oak and the Cherry Street Bridge, I, off the top of my head, I, I don't know.
This is just a, a portion, because I think we increased it to a million something or other, that we were going, going to be using funds.
So we increased it proportionately this year to reflect this budget.
Correct.
And then going forward, it's, the MFT is going to have a larger share towards the street rehab.
So was this, was this the incremental increase for
Yes.
Two thousand and twenty?
Yes.
Is this the set of roads?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Okay.
And, um, and a lot of that had to do with the MFT funding allocation going up.
Okay, that's right.
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Just one quick question, again, relative to, um, the prior bad experience. From a contractual standpoint, you know, how, how do we set up our expectations, and what sort of recourse do we have if, if the expectations aren't met?
Sure, so, um, the difference, I think, between some of the contracts we had written previously to the way that we write them now is we have, uh, specific liquidated damages based on performance. In other words, you can't start a certain activity until you finish this activity, and there's a timeframe set from, by the time you stop, you have to start something new. So that's all written out in the contract, that's how we hold them accountable. We, we do the same thing for, uh, the street rehab program, where, um, they, from the time that you finish grinding the road, within seventy-two hours, you have to have plans to be coming back to put the first layer back on. A lot of times, uh, in these types of projects, contractors will want to come into town once, grind everything and then disappear for two months, and, and that was part of that, that problem that, that Chris had brought up, um, sorry, President Rentsch had brought up, um, that, uh, that by addressing this, by saying, great, as soon as you finish with this, within a certain timeframe, you have to be back. It sets that expectation about what we want and how quickly we want them to follow back up, and if they don't meet that, we have heavy liquidated damages, and that charges them fiscally for it. So that's a, that's a change from where it was before, so we've tightened that up quite, quite a bit.
Uh, relative to, you know, quality, material quality and, and work site, you know, how they, how they leave the, uh, the area, so that's all.
That's all included as well, yeah. Above and beyond IDOT's minimum specifications, we can require more than, we just have to meet the minimum of them, which, which we do as part of our own Winnetka practice.
You get plant certifications and, and do your own analysis as well, right?
That's correct, yep.
Yeah, and I will say that, uh, the project in two thousand and eight was a full reconstruction of a street, and that's where things really went awry, because
I understand, some contract.
It's worn up for a long, long time, and then what they put back, it was shoddy at best, so make sure they understand that we're all watching them very closely.
Will do.
Uh, okay, any, anybody else?
Uh, Jim, how far, so this conflict between this resurfacing and Stormwater, the work that would be done in Stormwater, that's following up on Chris's question.
Mm-hmm.
How far back towards Glendale will Stormwater cause us to redo the same work?
Uh, it's my understanding that this, the roads that we're looking at doing, uh, surface grinds on fall within those areas where we're putting larger sewers, they would be total reconstructions, so this is just, it, it's addressing the drivability and the pothoming and the safety issue on the streets. Um, so from Birch, I want to say all the way back to Glendale, that's, that's almost all total reconstruction there.
So Birch, so, so the area that we're talking about resurfacing here will be torn out for Stormwater when Stormwater comes?
At some future date, right.
I, I think it leads to a, it becomes more of a political question for us rather than an engineering question, which is, it, it, the, the residents might say exactly what we were just talking about a second ago. Why would you rebuild this road when you're going to tear it all out again?
Well, I, I will say that, you know, those, those streets, and I, I live in that neck of the woods, you know, the, the pavement's delaminating, there's a lot of, a lot of it's turning into gravel, you know, and where you're getting those ridges down the street, where you've got pavement, pavement, and then it's all dished out because those areas have turned into gravel. It is getting pretty rough, and, uh, you know, a kid in a bicycle someday is going to take a header, uh, in one of those.
And that's actually happened.
Yeah.
That has happened.
Yeah, those areas around the school.
I mean, there's a lot of loose gravel that just comes from the pavement deteriorating. I mean, I agree that if, since it's just a surface scrape, it's not, it, it isn't a big deal, uh, except for the fact that it's three hundred and thirty thousand dollars that, uh, of course, when you think about it, I mean, where, where else are you going to spend it right now? Uh, you know, with our street rehabilitation program, these get cycled over time, and as Jim said, we've been kicking the can down the road, and the streets look like it.
Yeah, and if, if I could, actually what really drove this project is actually the residents. They, they've, I, they, I hear from most of them every year saying, is our street next year? And we say, we're hoping in 2019. It's, okay, is it 19? Actually, it's 20, we, we've been trying to, as we got a better understanding of what the schedule was for the stormwater project, that's moving along, but we, we still don't have a definitive date in, in the road. If you, if you wait too long, the road gets to a threshold when it starts to deteriorate, it deteriorates so fast that now we're not grinding and resurfacing, we're doing deep, it's going to cost us twice as much. So we're trying to prioritize to address those issues now at the, at the lowest price that we possibly can.
And I would think by the time you go back there, if you, instead of doing this program, go back and let's say, well, we'll, we'll do some selective cutting and patching, you'll probably spend half that money, and then the other half's still going to be bad. So I just want to make sure that was clear on the record that we thought about this, and, and to build the street over totally would probably be two or three times this price.
Well, we'd have to do that anyways for stormwater, though, right?
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just wondering, maybe the residents have more of a stomach for gravelly roads if it's going to be torn up in two years anyways. I mean, if we're talking
Two years would be really optimistic.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah. It, it's, it's going to be well, and, you know, when you think about it, the areas around the schools, they get a lot heavier usage than the normal residential streets. So, you know, they, a lot more people are experiencing bad, can, bad road conditions in areas which should have really good road conditions. So, you know, probably the 15-year estimate in those heavily trafficked areas, probably that would be way optimistic in terms of, of that timeframe.
Yeah, for what we're doing.
Yeah.
And once you develop potholes, and once you start getting more water into that base, it just becomes a big cancer. I mean.
Yeah, I guess if it's, if it's five years until they're going to tear them out, it makes more sense to do 300,000 now. I just, I, I always feel that when somebody comes back and says, and you guys tore up that road and rebuilt it, you know, you get that.
But we're not rebuilding it.
If it was a reconstruction, that would be hard.
Right, we're doing a surface only.
Yeah, right.
No, but I mean, but the same thing, it's, it's like when you resurface a road and then three days later, the water department comes out to dig a hole, and you're like, how come you guys didn't time it so that you didn't have to dig the hole in the brand-new street?
Some of those holes, we're not aware of when they form.
No, I mean, right, but the, but the person who looks and complains, you know, the person who looks and complains, they, they're not thinking of it that way, they're just thinking, how come you guys are doing this?
We'll just tell them what we normally tell them, we're idiots. I think we should do it. I, I've heard complaints about these streets from friends. These are the most heavily trafficked streets for kids on bikes going between Skokie and, and all the different schools. It is dangerous. On top of which, you also have cars, you know, those roads get weirdly narrow due to the driving skills in our village. And when you get a pothole, like someone's going to be swerving way outside their lane, and it's, it's chaos. So it's, if people are upset that we're fixing and then tearing it up, it's, we're morons, but I think it's the right thing to do.
Right. All right, I'd like to open this up for public comment. I know one person in the audience would like to speak to this. Sure. I guess there's two people in the audience that wish to speak to this.
I'm Ron White, 434 Berkeley. And Cherry Street, that first block east of Hibbert, is on that verge of beyond repairability. It's at that threshold of requiring immediate replacement. Of course, that also means the curbs. I also have another quick question. What is the status of that, that former blue house? Used to be on the corner of Hibbert and Cherry, and is now a abandoned project with only a foundation?
Our community development director isn't here tonight, Ron. Maybe you could give David Schoen a call, and he'd be happy to help you out. He's not here this evening to speak to the status of the permits.
You know, status of the permit, that, that would be
Give him a call.
It's not my business, but it's curiosity.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, neighbors are talking as they walk by. So anyway, that's, that's my comment about Cherry Street, observation.
Thanks.
My name is Dean Nelson. I live at 1191 Elm Street. So in relation to the street that you're talking about, Mehdi came by probably four or five months ago, who obviously does all the, the streets and that type of thing, and explained that they're going to be tearing up the street. And he said, we're actually going to go into your driveway. And I said, oh, that's interesting. I wasn't aware of that, okay, and I really do want to redo my driveway. So he said, don't tear it up now, wait till we finish this work. So I think there's an opportunity from a communication standpoint of what we're thinking about doing. The other thing, having lived on that street for seven years, as many of you have driven up and down at Mehdi, would tell you that it's one of the widest streets in the village. However, when you are on that street, especially during school times away from the summer times, and you're watching what's going on on that street, the number of near misses of kids on that street is unbelievable.
It is.
And primarily, as you all know, on that street, what happens is cars can park on both sides of the street. Well, one side of the street is probably 50% wider, the other one's more of a regular lane.
Right.
So when you start to look at that, when you get buses, if you will drive down there some morning as school's going on, and because we haven't had much of a harsh winter, it's very different. But cars are literally trying to get around the buses, around everything else. When you have a pace bus coming down there, it's like an accident waiting to happen because the ba, pace bus is so wide. Now, when you have cars that parked on both sides of the street, that doesn't happen in too many other places in the village. And I said to Mehdi, you know, here's the perfect opportunity to probably widen towards the Skokie School, not towards the, the houses, although there, because there's very few of those, but to really look at the opportunity from a safety standpoint to try and push that sidewalk back a little bit further. I mean, the amount of, I would call it just sort of buckweed or whatever you want to, that's buckthorn that's in there, is an eyesore for the school and everything else, as we know. It's not really providing any appropriate screening. So if you were to move the sidewalk back a couple of feet, one, when we have heavy snows, I mean, it's impossible for the guys to get the snow out of there. It then pushes into the street, it then creates this enormous safety hazard for all the people on this trafficked street. So away from the potholes, I think there's probably an opportunity to sort of look at the design engineering for that street and make it a lot safer. It is the widest, but you don't really have cars parked on both sides, and that's not going to change anytime soon because there's just simply not enough parking for the teachers and everybody else. I don't know if you have all seen what I'm talking about, but if you drive down there any morning or afternoon, or try and get by there, I mean, it's like, it feels like a figure-eight crash race about to happen. And the kids are really, when the warm weather comes, it's, it's worse because there's more kids on bikes and walking than there is in the wintertime. But the wintertime, you can't stop.
Are you talking about
So if you were at the Skokie School and went down to Hibbert?
Yeah.
Yeah, that corridor that I think you're talking about repaving, they're going to be tearing up, and they're going to actually come into the owner's driveways to sort of do the resurfacing, is, is what Mehdi had explained to me at the time, if I understood him correctly.
Hmm.
I don't know whether you're aware of all that, but
Is that the aprons?
I think the, the area in question is actually a section of curb, and where that's at, and where there's a, where there's a utility at, it's going to damage part of the apron. So the village's typical policy is if we damage part of an apron area, we replace that apron part.
Yeah, yeah, which is fine. And that, that's why he told me, don't, if you're going to replace your driveway, don't do it now because we're going to come and tear up part of your apron.
Correct.
So, which is fine. But I'm just saying, if you're going to do the street, we really should really look at, you know, the safety record and what we currently have there relative to what's going on there.
The issue is, we're not actually redoing the street, we're just doing the surfacing, and it'll affect
I understand that.
But we will be doing the street with the stormwater. So I think your suggestion's really good. I, I mean, all of us
Yeah, it's a timing thing.
Drive that crazy goat rodeo. So, but yeah, I mean, I, I think those are, that's a really good idea, that we should kind of put on the radar for when we're doing the real rebuild.
And, and to clarify, on the list today, I don't see Elm Street. Is it missed?
Elm Street's got more potholes than any street probably in Winnetka because, to somebody's point, it's heavily traveled.
I don't think it's on the MFT, I think it's on the other one.
Oh, it's on the, on the previous? Okay.
I, I have one other point, if I could, Chris.
Sure.
Okay, so I'm just going to hand out these pictures. Thank you for the extra time. So also what's happening is interesting. In water and electric, we have a staff of eight people, as you know, that are on the electric staff, three are on water. If you talk to the people that are doing water and everything, you'll see a picture from my neighbor. So a lot of us had had problems with obviously the sewage pipe that's running from the street. You see a lot of people that all of a sudden they have the old pipes, they have to be either torn up and replaced. The project you're looking at is a $17,000 project you had to do to try and replace that. And the previous owner had been there for a long time, a lot of neglect. I had to line my own pipe for $10,000, that, that's on me. But what I heard from the water people was a little frustrating in the fact that what's happening in the village, which you may know as a board of trustees, is when you look at these pictures, there actually is a water valve that shuts off the portable water to your house. Many of these valves have not been checked for the 12,000 different homes that we have here in Winnetka in quite some time, and it's a real source of frustration for the water department because as we start to bury electric lines, we start to do sewage work and that type of thing, it's not being coordinated well enough. So they're actually getting in the way of these water pipes, the portable water pipes. In this case, my neighbor couldn't shut ours off. It was so old and so decrepit that they had to replace the whole thing. So what you see is the repair project that the village had to do. And I'm not saying we need to go out and check and fix every one of these things, I'm just saying that as we do work and look at the stormwater project, there, there's not really a coordinated process that's being communicated back through water to try and help them along with the electrical work where they're burying and affecting a lot of the portable water lines in addition to gas lines. He almost hit one, by the way, when he was doing this because it had been so long. But trying to get at that type of situation to correct that is something I don't think we're really that aware of, and they're really understaffed when you come to the water department trying to correct this.
Yeah.
Maybe this is brought up before, so I don't want to
Sure. No, they, they cohabitate, and they do communicate, and they're under one director.
I know they are.
So
But that process is not happening quite right, just so you know, relative to what's going on.
Yeah, okay. We'll happy to discuss it more with the director.
No, and I think they're, they have good intentions, it's just that they're a little bit short-staffed and overwhelmed relative to what they're running into.
We've had some staff turnover.
Yeah.
And, and because they're, they're water main workers as well as electrical linemen, they're, they do both jobs, and we've had some turnover, so there has been some staffing shortages. They do the same thing. They do water mains and they do electric lines together. They, they're, it's not one group just doing water, another group doing electric, they both
Okay, the way that I understood it from talking to the person that was there, and I'm sure you're right, it was that there were eight guys doing water and, or eight doing electric and three doing water.
They rotate.
Yeah, okay.
They'll rotate the work, and they have
They just said that it's very difficult.
They all have the ability to do, and some of them are apprentice, and some of them are journeyman linemen.
Yeah.
Most of them are working towards the, the journeyman status, but they're, they're essentially trained to do both. So as we look at the B-boxes, the question that you arose, we're, we typically don't go out and exercise them all the time, but when we do have a project, a water main project, those B-boxes are reviewed and improved.
Yeah, the problem is
But they need to be replaced when they're done.
Yeah. But the problem is, a lot of these things, people don't even know they have them.
Sure.
And in this case, you know, it's like, you know, I asked the guy, could you just do a simple check and find mine and see that you could turn this thing off? Because if you can't turn these things off, if you know, and you have a problem, your house, your house floods.
Yeah.
I mean, it's like a simple check and balance system that we could try and look at over the next five to seven years to try and figure out what kind of problem that we really have. I mean, because it's probably not cheap to replace a damn thing.
Yeah, the, the biggest concern with the water, the water services, is the difference, you know, the old ones are, you know, some of them are lead, and then we have the coating to, to deal with that. So as new homes and improvements and additions, we're, we're trying to slowly but surely knock those off as we go along.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Huh. I thought this, I, I looked at the agenda tonight and thought, okay, 15 minutes and we're out of here. That just goes to show you, you, you really can never predict. All right, I'll, I'll bring it up here for any last questions or comments.
That was interesting, so, yeah. It's good to, good to know.
Something to keep in mind as we
Right.
As we wind our way to stormwater.
So it, so it appears that we're going to end up with Chicago paving as a little bidder? Because I don't think I want to spend 12 or 17,000 dollars more to go to a different bidder.
I agree.
Okay.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move this back up here and ask for a motion to adopt resolution number R-232020.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. I was on the wrong page.
All right.
May I have a motion to adopt resolution number R-242020?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, vote?
Trusty Kreip?
Yes.
Trusty Swark?
Yes.
Trusty Dearborn?
Yes.
Trusty Lambier?
Yes.
Trusty Kallard Archie?
Aye, yes. Motion carries, thank you. All right, item C, resolution number R-252020, use of supplemental MFT funding for street resurfacing, and this is up for adoption. And Jim is back to review this for us.
Yes, thank you. As, as a follow-up from the change, as I noted previously, at the December 17 meeting in 2019, as part of that IDOT bidding process, you have to present to them a resolution of the anticipated dollar cost. This was based on our engineer's estimate. So staff had brought to the council for approval a resolution that authorized the village